Let's call the order of the Sparks City Council Meeting of January 14th, 2013, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty, Lawson, Smith, Carrigan, Schmidt, City Manager Carey, City Attorney Adams, and City Clerk Gardner. We have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, we have Rajan Zed, President of the University Society, Universal Society of Hinduism. Welcome Rajan.
Om Bhur Bhuvahasvaha, Tat Savitur Varenyam, Vargo Divasya Dimahi, Diyo Yona Prachodayat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamaya, Tamsoma Jyotirgamaya, Mritiyor Mamrathamgamaya. Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from darkness to light. Lead me from death to immortality. Niyatam Kurukarma, Tavam Karma Jaya Oh Haya Karma Na, Shri Raya Tera Pichata Na Prasiddhiyad Karma Na, Jag Narthaat Karma Na Oh, Niyatra Lowkoyam Karma Bandhna, Tadartham Karma Kaunteya Mukta Sang Samachara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to maintain your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Tasmaada Saktastatham Karyam Karma Samachara, Asaktoh Haya Charan Karma, Paramabhati Purusha, Karma Neva He Samsidhi, Mastita Jankadeya, Lokasangreha Mevapi, Sampashankar Tomra Hasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahano Banaktu Sahaviren Karva Vihaai, Tijasvi Nawadita Mastu Mahavat Visabhai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akuti Samna Hirdjaniwa Samnamastuvo Mano Yatha Vasu Sasthi. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om.
Thank you Rajan. You remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Carey, would you lead us?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
I want to say one thing about Rajan Zed. He comes to us pretty often during the years and starts our city council meetings, but I want you to know that he travels all over California and does the same thing. He's recently, in the last three or four or five months, gone to 27 or 28 different cities in California and done the opening prayer, Hindu prayer, for the first time ever in those particular cities. So, we are very fortunate really to have Rajan come to our area so many times. Thank you Rajan.
I'm opening the sound as it speaks the model.
Oh, great. Good. Good for you and thanks for all the pieces that you spread. Thanks. Okay, next is comments from the public. I have no speaking cards. Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? Okay, approval of the agenda. And when you approve the agenda, we need to add an item to this, 6.6. And I'll read it real quick, if I can find it. 6.6 will be an emergency item to the agenda per NRS 241.020 subsection 2, general business item 6.6, consideration and possible ratification of resolution number 3233 declaring a disaster area and state of emergency in the city of Sparks caused by mechanical failures at the Truckee Meadows water reclamation facility. So, when we approve the agenda, feel include that item in there at 6.6, please. Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as regular with the inclusion of items.
6.6.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Number three, consideration and possible approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 10th, 2012. Any omissions or deletions or corrections? Looking for a motion, Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes of the December 12th meeting as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Announcements, presentations. Next, we have 4.1, City Clerk Oath of Office. So, if I could have Ms. Teresa Gardner come up front, please. We'll administer the oath, I hope. Okay, raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I Teresa M. Gardner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and protect.
That I will support and protect.
And defend the Constitution and government.
And defend the Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and government.
And the Constitution and government.
Of the state of Nevada.
Of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
And loyalty to the same.
And loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance.
Any ordinance.
Resolution or law.
Resolution or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will, and that I will well.
And that I will well.
Yes. And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
All the duties of city clerk.
All the duties of city clerk.
For the city of Sparks.
For the city of Sparks.
County of Washoe, state of Nevada.
County of Washoe, state of Nevada.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Martini. And I'd just like to quickly introduce my family that's here with me today in the back row. If you could please stand. This is my son, Jared Espinoza, my husband Troy Gardner, my son Jake Gardner, my brother-in-law Tab Gardner, and my sister-in-law Melissa Gardner.
Welcome. Thanks for coming, folks. We appreciate it. Okay, next is the proclamation for Public Schools Week. Is there someone here to accept this? Come on down. I'll read it. Have a seat and I'll read it and then we'll present it to you. Sparks, city of Sparks proclamation. Whereas the city of Sparks, the Washoe County School District, and Parent Leaders for Education have come together to advance for a new culture in Nevada, one which promotes education as its top priority and considers it the best means to achieve economic stability, strong future leaders, and more productive citizens. And whereas we believe quality education should be number one priority in Nevada, should allow all students to achieve their potential, requires a partnership of schools, parents, businesses, government, and community, is the only path to sustainable economic stability in strong communities in Nevada, and needs to be supported by adequate resources. Whereas the Washoe County School District remains on its reform path with Envision Washoe County School District 2015, investing in our future, five-year strategic plan dwelling detailing, a mission to create an education system where all students achieve economic academic success, develop personal and civic responsibility, and achieve their career and college readiness for the 21st century. Whereas there is a definite link between education and the economy, and in Nevada, the best economic stimulus package is investing in education. Whereas business, government, community, and education leaders must join together to help define, promote, and implement the changes necessary to improve our schools. And whereas Parent Leaders for Education is asking all public officials to communicate with their constituents, cooperate with each other, and create a new Nevada by promoting adequate and stable funding for education, therefore creating the high-quality workforce necessary to drive economic growth and stability and make a better future for all Nevadans. Whereas Parent Leaders for Education is investing, is inviting all northern Nevada public officials to visit our schools in their district to better understand the public K through 12 education issues, and to listen to their constituents, share their view that quality education is important. Now therefore, I Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim January 14th through the 18th, 2013, Public Schools Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in the events planned by Parent Leaders for Education, to become more informed of the funding challenges facing Nevada public schools, and to add their voices and support to manage that the quality education is important. Yep.
Thank you so much. It means so much to know that the city of Sparks is supporting public schools by this proclamation. My name is Jill Toles. I'm with Parent Leaders for Education, and we started actually at an event in Sparks at the Sparks Nugget back in October of 2009. It started with seven parents who looked at our standings, that unfortunately we still by Education Week, Week's publication are still 50th in the state of Nevada out of all United States. And those seven parents just said that we want to make a difference. And so, we now have over 1,000 on our email list. And this week is an opportunity to invite the public to get informed and get involved with supporting our public schools and for advocating and letting their voice be heard. So, if anyone wants to know more, they can go to www.educationpriorityone.org.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and accepting the proclamation and keep up the good work. Seven to 1,000, that's a, that's a pretty good group of people. And we all know that education is very, very important to, to our society and especially the state of Nevada. So, thank you for being here. Anybody have any comments? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is proclamation for National Radon Month, National Radon Action Month. Is Susan Howe here? Come on up Susan. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and let you say a few words too. City of Sparks proclamation. Whereas radon is a colorless, odorless, natural occurring radioactive gas that may threaten the health of our citizens and their families. And whereas the challenge is that we cannot, we can't see, smell, or taste radon. So, it's easy to forget that radon may be a problem in homes, schools, and any building in Sparks. And whereas radon is the leading cause of lung cancer for non-smokers in the United States, and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas the U.S. EPA estimates 21,000 people in the United States die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, more than are killed from secondhand smoke, drunken driving, falls in the home, drowning, or home fires. And whereas any home in Sparks may have elevated levels of radon even if other homes in the same neighborhood do not. And whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive, and when identified, the problems can be fixed. And whereas the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension, the Nevada State Health Division, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency support efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, I Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim January 2013 as National Radon Action Month.
I wish to thank the city council for presenting us with the Radon Action Month proclamation for January. This is the fourth year that you have provided... Do I need to turn that around? This is the fourth year that you have provided us with a proclamation, but this is the first year that I've been able to visit with you here. We feel this proclamation is important, and we thank you for your support to our service to this city and to this county, because it's especially important because radon is the leading cause of lung cancer among non-smokers. And as the proclamation said, the only way to know is to test your home. According to experts, living in a home with an average radon level of four pico curries, which is the EPA action level, is a similar risk to someone smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. But the good news is that that is preventable, and it begins with a simple three-day test. And since our program began at the Cooperative Extension since 2008, we've given out over 2,000 test kits to the Sparks Spanish Springs area, and at least half of them have been used, which means 1,000 homes have been tested in this area. And the radon potential in Sparks is not as high as the whole county itself. It's 7.7%, which means 7.7% of the homes that have tested have found elevated radon levels. But there's still a lot of homes left that haven't tested. The whole Washoe County potential is 21%. So, that's a comparison. In zip codes 89431 and 89441, the potential is 15.5% and 12%. So, this month is National Radon Action Month across the nation, and all the state radon programs are trying to bring about awareness to radon in homes. So, here in Nevada, we're giving out test kits for free. We started in December. We go to February 28th. And we have two programs that we're offering at North Valleys Library on January 26th at noon, and South Valleys Library, January 30th at 6:00 PM. And we have radon hotline. It's 1-888-RADON10, and a website, radonnv.com. And you can find maps for all the other counties in the state on our website.
Can you repeat the website and the phone number again, please?
Okay. 888-RADON10, and radonnv.com.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have the Hometown Christmas Parade winners, award winners. Francine?
The list there, and if you want to bring them off?
Sure.
I have awards.
You have the awards? Okay. So, here we go. On December 8th, the 26th Annual Hometown Christmas Parade strolled down Victorian Avenue to the delight of everyone that came. Delayed a week, and still was a great event. And it was a great event. I think we had more people we ever had. Weather was perfect. Couldn't have been much better. And you can thank me. I arranged it that way, so... But the council did vote on it first, so it wasn't just me. We want to thank the supporters who, without, without whom that could not have happened, the leadership and support of our presenting sponsor, Intuit. Others that were sponsors included Rail City, KTVN, Reno News and Review, plus many volunteer groups like the Boys and Girls Clubs, Hot August Nights, Livingstone's Church, and The Chamber. Special thanks to Swire Coca-Cola, who developed and led the toy drive which collected 1,350 toys and $500 in cash donations for inaugural City of Sparks Toy Drive. Is somebody from Swire Cola here?
Yes.
Come on up and say a few words, please. Or get your, get your, get your award or your presentation here.
Um, trust you guys. You want me to speak to the mic?
Yeah, speak to the mic and just give us your name real quick.
I'm Jeff Judd with Swire Coca-Cola, and I just want to thank Francine and Tracy and the city for participating in something that I kind of thought of and shared with Tracy and Francine, and they thought it was a great idea. And I think it turned out really, really well for a first year. And we've already got a couple more big sponsors wanting to get in for next year. So, it looks like we'll at least double numbers for next year and hope to grow it and get continued support for the community. And something really that's, that is gratifying is the fact that we could do something for the kids in our Truckee Meadows. And I think, thank you guys for the support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any other sponsors that are here that would like to say a couple words? Okay, let's go on to the parade winners. First for the community group was Souls Harbor Church. Is there someone here representing Souls Harbor? Okay. Best vehicle, Washoe County Schools Classroom on Wheels, the cow bus. Anyone here? Under the category of costume group, High Desert Steam. Thank you for coming today. Under animals, we have Llamas and More Association. For the best float was Cub Scout Pack #34, and I guess they will not be here. And then last but not least, the marching band. It was a tie for the best band, the mayor's own marching band and Envision Performing Arts. Either one of them here.
This is Envision.
Okay. You don't have to stay on opposite sides of the room. We're not arguing here, are we?
I don't understand the background.
Thank you, Envision. Thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Thanks everyone for being here. Appreciate it. I wanted to let everybody know that these were chosen by a panel of judge, three judges, Jessica, or four judges, Jessica Labarber and Michelle McDonald from Intuit, Jeff Martinez from KTVN, and Ryan Cursey from Swire Coca-Cola. Any of you here today? Well, thank you anyway. Thank everyone for being involved. We appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Consent items 5.1 through 5.5. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Motion to approve consent items 5.1 and 5.5.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Next is 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation for appointment to the Western Nevada Development District for possible action. Okay, my recommendation is for Terrence Lee Howard. Terrence is a business owner in Sparks, owns TNT Automotive, a diesel repair shop. He's also a native Sparks, been born and raised in Sparks, been here for many, many years. He was the, what I believe was the best applicant. He was recommended by Mr. Schmidt. So, any discussion? Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to also add for Mr. Howard, he's been in the automobile business for a long time in the city of Sparks, but he also is in the mining business throughout the state, in several mines throughout several different counties. So, being a Western Nevada, he's a, he has contacts throughout the entire western portion of the states and probably throughout all of Nevada. So, I think it's a good choice. Thank you.
Yeah, and when I did, I talked to him a couple times. One time I contacted him, he was at his mine working, so... All right, any discussion? Any further discussion? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Moved to confirm the appointments of the mayor to the Western Nevada Development District.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve Terrence, let me get the name again to be sure, Terrence Lee Howard to the let me get the name again to be sure, Terrence Lee Howard, to the WNDD. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.2, consideration and possible acceptance of the Spanish Springs Home Depot donation of 2,500 10-year smoke alarms for the Sparks Fire Department for Project Safe Residential Smoke Alarm Program. Mr. King?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for doing this today. I'm here to accept and show appreciation for a donation from the Spanish Springs Home Depot of 2,500 smoke alarms to our Project Safe program. I mean, that is just absolutely huge for our program. We've had to submit for three different grants, three years in a row, just to get this program off the ground, and each grant gave us enough money to purchase 1,000 smoke alarms each time, and all the materials. This donation that Home Depot so graciously to do for us is going to allow us to go along for another couple of years, probably without having to put in a grant. And going for the fourth time for a grant is tough, you know, I'm not sure if that will get approved or not. So, this is going to help us out tremendously. They actually had a nationwide program going on where they won a contest by selling the most smoke alarms in their own stores as well, and we are the beneficiary of that to be able to get the smoke alarms, so they did a great job by doing that. One of the other things that was in here is they also will be donating 25,000 contributions to the National Firefighters Foundation, and it's called Be a Hero, Save a Hero Initiative. There's another great thing that Home Depot is doing nationwide, not just our community, but our community alone, they've always been a great help for us. We've done special events at their store, and they've always been very helpful with us in doing that. And you can see that we have quite a few employees of Home Depot here, they're very proud of what they do, and of what they do for the community as well. They actually do a lot more for the community than I ever knew. They're here for us, and that's for darn sure. So, I want to thank them very much for the donation, it's going to help us out for a long time.
What's a smoke alarm cost?
Nowadays, depends on what time, these type were around $15 or so? Yeah, each, 15 to 20 dollars each for these. They're 10-year smoke alarms, so they're good for 10 years, they come with a 10-year lithium battery, which is fantastic. So, that's what we're out installing in houses now with our Project Safe program. And so far to date, we've installed, we've installed smoke alarms in 647 homes, we installed 1,687 smoke alarms, and our goal for 2013 is to reach 1,000 homes. That's our goal, so we're gonna try to go for it. We even have planned on doing another special event at Home Depot sometime between March and April, so...
Somebody from Home Depot want to say something? Come on up. And while you are, you know, thank you so much, this is wonderful, you guys are great corporate sponsors and great stuff you've done for the city and stuff, we really appreciate it. And I think Mr. Smith has something to say, too.
I just wanted to say thank you, and that, you know, as long as I can remember, there's always been a Home Depot around, and we remember when you folks opened up the Galleria. But giving back to the community like you're doing right now means a lot to the City of Sparks, and you should be proud of what you've done, and we're proud of having you here. Honestly, thank you.
I didn't remember that you were all going to be here today, or I would have worn my apron that you have, too, because I have one, I have one signed by all the store employees when you opened up over there, and I have it in my office, so I'm sorry I forgot to wear it. But, go ahead, give us your name for the record, and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Damon Garrett, and I'm what's considered to be a pro-count representative handling this district along with another down in Sacramento area, but on behalf of myself, our district staff, and our more than 800-plus local store, Home Depot associates, I want to thank you guys, one, for the acceptance, appreciate Bob King and his opportunity, this opportunity, his involvement obviously within our store, and I thank you guys as well for accepting this, and it'll go a long way towards saving lives in the local community, and the outreach programs that they're involved with and that we're involved with as well, obviously is a great benefit to the community. So, thank you very much for the opportunity, Mayor Martini, and I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, guys, and anyone else? Looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
You know, I noticed her camera's broke, Francine, you might want to get a picture for him. Did he get it working?
I did.
Okay, I move to accept the donation of 2,500 10-year smoke alarms from the Spanish Springs Home Depot.
Mr. Lawson?
I'll second that, and just so you know, I spend a lot of time in your store.
And money.
Yeah, they actually, they gave me a parking spot, I've been spending so much time on it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, thanks, Home Depot. Okay, next is 6.3, consideration, possible approval of reimbursement to the City of Reno in the amount of $444,834.72 for the Sparks share of a change order to the Auburn Constructors, Inc., by the City of Reno upgrade to the electrical system at Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And you are, okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. For the record, I'm Kim Labor, the maintenance manager out at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I also have two guests with me today. I have Robert Lee, a senior engineer from the City of Reno, and I also have Wade Johnson from Auburn Constructors that's also here today, that's currently handling a $3,600,000 electrical construction project out at Tom Wharf. My purpose today is to give you an update on the electrical repairs to the failed switch gear that we experienced back in September, late September and early October. That failure caused us to have to bring out 11 generators, some transformers, and run the plant on generators for a period of approximately four to six weeks. At times, the entire plant was on generators and running on diesel fuel, so... What I'm here to talk about today is the long-term corrective action that we're looking at for the repairs to that switch gear. We've determined that repairs really aren't the way we want to handle this. The equipment is obsolete, and parts are hard to get. As part of the $3,600,000 project that Auburn Constructors is currently doing out at Tom Wharf, they were going to do approximately $250,000 worth of repairs to that switch gear. We determined because of the condition, the inability to get parts, that really what we want to do is do a complete replacement of that switch gear. We've worked with Reno and Auburn Constructors, and what we are doing with this agenda item is looking to do a change order with Auburn Constructors to, instead of doing the repairs to that switch gear, is to do a complete replacement. By doing the change order, we saved approximately two months, possibly three months, in getting this work done. And due to the nature of the equipment and the temporary repairs that we did, we felt that this was the proper way to go. If there's any, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What are we talking about, a price difference from going for a repaired unit to a new unit, and the change order value?
What we're looking at for the complete replacement of the switch gear is $1,400,000.
Change order, we're pushing that change order now into about an 80% change order from original contract, because original contract was $2 million.
Yeah, the original contract, yeah, the original total contract was $3,600,000 for Auburn.
And that was the original contract?
Right, that was the original contract. Our share of that, our share of that contract, Reno's share was $2,400,000 approximately, and Sparks' share was $1,100,000 approximately.
Of the original contract?
Of the original contract, correct. So, I agree with you, it is a significant increase to that contract. Having, doing the change order versus going out to bid really saved us two to three months in getting this equipment ordered, delivered, and installed, and we felt that that was the right way to go, based on what happened with that equipment, that we're not entirely comfortable. The repairs have gotten us through to this date, but I'm just, we're not comfortable with the temporary repairs that have been made.
What I'm not comfortable with is, the original contract was a Sparks contractor.
No, the original contract was with the City of Reno, because this is a capital improvement project. So, the City of Reno initiates these contracts, and we do the reimbursement to Reno for our portion.
Was it the original low bidder a Sparks contractor?
In this case, no.
Nelson Electric wasn't the low bidder on this job?
This was the case where I believe Nelson didn't do the proper signatures of the paperwork, and...
This is what I'm getting at, the original contractor was a Sparks contractor, they were low bidder. There was a paperwork error that caused us to go to a higher contractor to begin with. And we have that higher contractor on site, and now we're doing a probably close to 80% increase in change order for the higher value. And are you declaring that this is an emergency, that that switch gear has to replace in the next 90 days?
I'm not going to go as far as declaring that it's an emergency, but working with Tom Wharf staff, working with the City of Reno, and working with the City of Reno Legal Department, which is also, covers our legal department for Tom Wharf, we really decided that this was the direction we needed to go.
But the change order is $1.4 million?
Correct.
Okay. And we're convinced that if we went to bid in 90 days, that we would not get a better price than $1.4 million?
Actually, I'd like, if possible, Wade, would you like to come down? We worked with Auburn Constructors, and we worked with the engineers to go over their bid, and I'd like Wade maybe to talk about how we...
Let me just ask you a question. If this was your house, and you had to re-change your panel on out in your house, and you originally had a job that was going to be $100,000, and you're now at $18,000, would you question that?
To be honest with you, I went over their bid, and I worked with the contractor, and I feel very comfortable that we are getting a good deal on this, and if this was my money and the seriousness of this, I would go this direction.
I'm asking the question, is there's 90 days available to go and put this out to bid?
I wouldn't feel, I don't feel comfortable waiting to go out to bid. If, given the seriousness of that electrical switch gear, and the fact that we, you know, it costs us a million, almost a million five to have the generators and the money that we spent for the diesel out there, that I wouldn't like to do that again, it really put our permit at risk, and I think, I think this is the direction that we really need to go.
And I'm going to support you in it, but I'm just going to go ahead and point on out that the sewer plant is probably going to be in the neighborhood of $10 million worth of emergency repairs here soon. $10 million out of an $18 million reserve. There's not a whole lot of time left. We got, I mean, we're declared emergency, we may have to declare a much bigger emergency if we have too many more failures on out there. And I think we're, I think we need to tighten this baby up quick.
Just for the record, as part of, one of the things that Tom Wharf has done recently is we've done a risk ranking of the equipment and the facility out there, and we are well aware of what needs to be done out there.
In my tenure of 11 years, we've gone from the star sewer plant to one with $10 million repairs in 90 days.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, move, make a motion to approve the change order.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.3, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Ms. Ratty, did you have something, or you're...
No.
Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it.
What's the timeframe, can you get that fixed?
It'll be fixed before the end of May. We expect the equipment to be delivered early in May, and repairs will be made immediately. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Just a little more questions.
Go ahead.
Is the actual hard price of the switching gear?
The actual hard price of the switch gear is roughly $1 million.
Okay, so we're going to pay $76,000 just for sales tax, so the city buying this equipment directly?
That's, that's up to us.
Is that correct?
I believe so.
So, we have the ability to buy this directly right now and have it on-site, and the same type period these folks can, for $76,000 less?
Just, part of the equipment is not off the shelf.
I understand, somebody's got to buy it, they pay sales tax, we don't. $76,000 is what it costs us right now for, you know, same period time, we can have the equipment here, why we're going to bid, all can be done. That's my, this is how counting works, you got to count every penny of it, you can't just throw away $76,000. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
6.4, discussion and possible approval of Resolution 3231 in support of the consolidated C-Tax bill draft. Mr. Mayberry, Mr. Kronk, enlighten us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Carey, Mr. Adams. Adam Mayberry, Community Relations Manager. The item before you is a resolution for your approval. To give you a little background, as you may recall, this last year, well, in the 2011 session of Assembly Bill 71, created the Legislative Commission to conduct an interim study concerning the equitable allocation of money distributed from the local government tax distribution account, also known as the C-Tax formula. Mr. Kronk and I attended numerous meetings in Carson City this last year, with Mr. Kronk attending dozens of meetings within a working group that consisted of his peers, who collectively agreed upon a solution to the current C-Tax formula that allows more stability and some consistency and fairness. The interim committee chairwoman, Marilyn Kirkpatrick, who is also the incoming speaker of the assembly, has requested that all local governments and those impacted by C-Tax present the attached resolution for your approval supporting the C-Tax change. If you recall, back in September, there was a joint meetings amongst Reno, Washoe County, School District, and Sparks, and Jeremy Aguero gave a presentation of the proposed changes. Some of you may have heard that presentation more than once, and this resolution essentially allows you to endorse those changes. Just for further background as well, the bill, which is actually, the BDR, which is now a bill, Assembly Bill, Assembly Bill 68, is expected to be heard early in the session and go through the legislative process and to be signed by the governor if things work out as expected prior to the next fiscal year. So, these new changes would be in effect for the next fiscal year, and I've asked Financial Services Director Jeff Kronk to be by my side in case any of you have some more fiscal, financial related questions. But I think fundamentally, the changes in the C-Tax formula really allow the base distribution to grow using the prior year's total distribution as the starting point, unlike what the formula consists of today, where I think you go back five years or so. So, that's a little background, and we're looking for your approval on this resolution.
Questions, Mr. Lawson?
Well, I've heard Jeremy Aguero's presentation on C-Tax twice, and still don't understand it. So, the bottom line is, is this good or bad for the City of Sparks? Are we going to get more, less, or the same amount of money from the C-Tax? Because this formula is like two pages long, and you throw everything in there, including the kitchen sink and the population and your dog's last name, and you come up with this formula of how it's distributed, so, simple question.
Yeah, Jeff Kronk for the Financial Services Director. It was a good process that we went through. When I first got here, I can't tell you how many phone calls I had to make throughout the state to find people who understood that formula, like you're talking about, it is an unbelievably complex formula. This proposal doesn't change that too much, but bottom line is, is that it... This proposal doesn't change that too much, but bottom line is, is that it does provide some stability. If anything, we backtested this proposal probably to death in all kinds of variables, and if we had this formula historically, if it was implemented from day one, we would be a little bit better off here in Sparks. So, you know, assuming going forward, it provides the same sort of outcome, if you will, it would benefit us a little bit better. What it essentially does is it provides a little bit stability, takes a little bit of the volatility that we've seen, just inherent to the formula, out of that, and it, but yet it still allows for the dollars to follow growth. So, that's in a nutshell, but...
So, based on our current state of flat, zero, minus growth, is not going to hurt us or help us?
Yeah, obviously...
Keep us roughly the same?
Maybe slightly better.
Okay.
Yeah. All things being equal.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, talking about the formula. So, are there, is anybody thinking about changing it to make it easier? I mean, this doesn't make, to me, I'm with that, this isn't making any easier.
If we didn't make it easier with this go-around, I doubt it's going to be easier going forward.
So, we're not even going to attempt to change the formula at all?
I doubt it. Getting, it was a monumental task, getting the number of representatives at least together to at least talk about it, what was an amazing, you know, something I had never seen before. You've got to remember, there's over 200, you know, agencies that receive the C-Tax, so getting 200 agencies, let alone 200 individuals, to agree on something is not likely to happen. So, part of the problem, to make it simpler, is that we're now ingrained into this formula, and it's probably here to stay. You can tweak it here and there, but...
Yeah, when something's bad, though, and you're ingrained in it, to me, the first step would be to chuck it and start over again. I mean, it may happen anyway, because isn't the city as firmly suing the state for C-Tax?
They are.
I mean, if you saw the numbers that they got, it was kind of ridiculous.
They have tiny, tiny distribution.
Right. A couple bucks per person or something. It was like $6 or something amazing.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, I just thought that if you're going to go for it, go for it.
We did talk about it, but that died pretty quickly.
I think we were fortunate to even get what we got now.
It's true.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. Ratty?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3231, supporting BDR 247. Now, the bill number is 63. Is that correct?
What's the bill number? With the bill draft number?
The bill draft number is 247. It's now, however, in a bill, AB 68, Assembly Bill 68.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.4, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You up again there, Mr. Mayberry?
Yes, sir.
6.5, Discussion and Possible Approval of Memorandum of Understanding on Legislative Cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As members of the Council, Adam Mayberry, for the record. Once again, this is also a relatively short legislative item. The Regional Planning and Governing Board, in the past, has spearheaded this MOU, this Memorandum of Understanding, amongst nearly all of the local governments in Washoe County, along with other local governing entities. The memorandum merely states that all the governments will communicate, collaborate, and cooperate with one another moving forward during the 2013 legislative session, which begins on February 4th. This MOU has actually been brought to this body for at least the last 10 years, just about five times, just prior to the legislative session. So, that's the summary of the item, and we're looking for your approval. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's been 11 years since I've been on the board, it's been here 11 years, or half that time, for five times that I've seen it kind of, do we, do we really have high hopes for a different outcome this time?
No.
You know, I don't know exactly how to answer that, Councilman, other than to say that...
Just, you know, your people that you work with and all the other entities, are they, do they understand that this costs the taxpayers money and absolutely means absolutely nothing to anybody?
Well, and, you know, those discussions have been had amongst all the local government lobbyists and their lobbyists. I've expressed those same sentiments to some of my colleagues in that circle, particularly the Regional Governing Board, but, you know, the sparse legislative team felt that this would be important to bring forward to this body for approval, but certainly I understand what you're saying.
I agree. I think it's important to go through this process, but at some point, there has to be outcomes attached to it, that, you know, if we have an exercise that, you know, 10 boards and commissions and staffs and people are handing, you know, it costs $135 to process a check. This probably costs $2,000 to process this Member of Understanding by the time it's all finished, between all the different governments, and, you know, it basically ends up being a piece of paper with, you know, 12 signatures on it and three pages long, and it's not even really worth the paper that it's printed on, you know, because, so, you know, I think it's important to do it. I'm just voicing my frustration that, you know, if we're going to bring dignity to this process, we have to honor it through everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, for Mr. Smith, I heard the over and unders two weeks before it gets violated, but that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Memorandum of Understanding.
Ms. Ratty?
I was just going to say that, you know, my parents taught me that the only person's behavior you control is your own.
Yeah.
And that our legislative team is going into this, taking it seriously and intending to abide by it, and I will give all other legislative teams representing all other bodies that same benefit of the doubt, and obviously, we disagree with things down there, but I'm going in with optimism. And I think if everybody does that, we'll have a better session.
Is that a second?
That is a second.
Okay, thanks. You know, I agree, it's the right thing to do. We can only control what we do, and we try to play by the rules we usually do, so... Any other discussion? Have a motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Ms. Ratty? Discussion, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I wanted to say that, you know, I think we chair more than 50% of the people that sign this MOU, so, like Julia said, we control our own destiny on this, so I think it may be a little bit better this year.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Planning and zoning public hearings, PCN 12029, consider, whoops, go ahead, Mr. Carey. Oh, I'm sorry. It's right here in front of my nose. Next will be 6.6, consideration and possible ratification of Resolution Number 3233, declaring a disaster area and state of emergency in the City of Sparks caused by mechanical failures at Truckee Metals Water Reclamation Facility. Mr. Krutz?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini. For the record, Neil Krutz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. It's been a challenging last few days out at the Truckee Metals Water Reclamation Facility, where we started to learn Thursday evening that we were having leaks in our primary wash sewage force mains that pump the sewage from the sewage lines that enter the plant up to the top of the treatment process. We noticed Thursday evening that one of those lines had had a spot where the pipe had been worn so thin that it worn through and began to leak. We then saw a second pipe on an adjacent raw sewage pump begin to exhibit the same behaviors with the same leak a mere 12 hours later, pointing to us that we had a systemic issue out there with the equipment that had gone well past its useful life and put the plant in serious risk of essentially being able to operate. Because if we aren't able to get the sewage out of the hole and up to the top of the plant where we begin to treat it, then we don't have a plant. Based on that, we worked through the City Manager's Office to ask the mayor to declare a state of emergency. We began to effect emergency repairs that were successful, as you all were informed midday on Friday, and then started taking additional steps to try and identify the true extent and nature of the problem. We met with some success in that additional testing on Sunday, but not complete success. You know, we were able to see the tail end of the pipe or the discharge end of those pipes, and verified that they're in pretty good shape out there at the end, but we were not able to get into the downstream or the beginning end of those pipes down in the bottom of the sewage hole, because we were not able to get the, all of the gates at the plant that control flow both in and out closed sufficiently so that we could drain the system and at least get a camera in there to look around. As we, you know, began to see the emergency conditions set themselves up on Friday morning, we began working with a contractor to implement a pump around, if you will, where we go upstream of the plant, grab all the inflow there, and essentially pump around the headworks and take it from, you know, the alfalfa fields to the west of Tom Whorf directly into the beginning of the treatment process. That work continues, and it makes complete sense to me to continue that so that we can isolate that headworks-to-grit removal system, dry it out, and conduct a complete inspection and determine what an appropriate response is. You know, at this point, we are still trying to learn about the condition of the system. We were able to verify at the very front end of those pipes from the raw sewage pumps that we did have sections of pipe where the thickness of the metal had abraded away to half of what it used to be. That is very concerning, but we need to learn more about the system so that we know what type of repairs to affect and the timeframe in which they need to be done. We are working continuously with the contractor who's doing the pump around setup. They are working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to get that system in place. The initial estimate was a five-day or so implementation timeframe. I will be leaving this meeting and heading out to Tom Whorf for an update on how that work is going, and we will be holding another update call with staff from Tom Whorf, the City of Sparks, and the City of Reno tomorrow morning at 9:00, to see how we're doing in getting that completed. I believe that you have been communicated quite well with, from the City Manager's Office, he has sent you updates, so I think putting that together with kind of the summary that I've, the blanket I've thrown over the issue here today, at this point, would be happy to answer any questions you have and ask that you ratify the emergency declaration as made by the mayor.
Questions, Mr. Lawson?
Neil, with the pump shutdown, how much time is there, basically, till this overflows, I guess, for lack of a better word?
We can, we can run without pumps for a period of up to eight to 10 hours, and we do that by simply closing as much as we can the gates that allow the flow to come into the plant, and it really starts backing up in the sewer pipe. We can, we can get an eight to 10-hour window before you would start seeing things rising up out of manholes.
So, that, that's a pretty...
That's not a pretty...
That's not a good visual.
No, sir.
And my math skills tell me, being at the bottom of the valley kind of means we'll get it first. So, the other, so the pump around that we're talking about, is, where approximately are we looking at putting that in?
The first alfalfa field to the west of Tom Whorf. There's Tom Whorf, there's the entry road, there's the Steamboat Creek, and then there's an alfalfa field.
And how far away is that from the...
Well, it's right adjacent to the plant, but, you know, we're, operationally, it's looking like they're going to have to go into two different sets of manholes. We really have two very large sewer lines that come into the plant, a 72-inch sewer line that picks up the south and up to kind of the middle half of the valley, and then a smaller, because it's only 60 inches in diameter, one that picks up all of Sparks and some of North Reno. We've got to intercept the flows out there in that field, so we might be looking at, you know, as much as a couple of thousand feet of pump around pipe that we're going to need to string between those manholes and, you know, the top of our treatment system at Tom Whorf.
And that's 40 feet down?
The wet well at Tom Whorf, where the pipes come in, they go across a set of initial bar screens to pick up the bigger debris that comes into the plant, and then into a wet well. The bottom of that wet well is about 40 feet down, and then we have to pump it up to start the treatment process about 20 feet in the air above ground, so we got about 60...
How deep are the five-foot and the seven-foot pipes? How deep below ground?
They're in that 25 to 30-foot range. As you get out into the fields, you do begin to gain some elevation back as those pipes drain by gravity into the plant, but that's certainly one of the challenges, is coming up with a series of pumps, and we're looking at anywhere from, say, six to eight pumps that can, you know, draw or develop a suction head, if you will, out of flow that's that far down into the ground.
It's an amazing undertaking in my mind, but...
And it is in my mind as well.
Yeah, this, the sheer diameter of five-foot and seven-foot is not easily fathomed, you know, when you think about, that's a huge amount of liquid.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith? Are those, the two lines that failed, or just one line, both ends?
No, no, it's two, it's two separate lines, on the same spot on the pipe where they, and they sit right next to each other.
So, are they considered failed, and we're going to have to replace them, or what do we, I know we patched them?
Well, we're still trying to figure out what the extent is. We have patched them. We have a short-term patch. We worked with a, you know, with a local metalworking firm to develop some stainless steel strips that are rubber-lined that essentially we clamped around the pipe.
Okay.
And so, they are operational, and right now, we are running the plant in normal operations with normal staff.
So, the citizens won't recognize that anything's wrong at all unless it starts backing up, which it shouldn't do now?
That is certainly our hope.
Okay. What is, what is the City of, the City of Sparks is, excuse me, is a potential subdivision? What does that mean? It's the first line in this contract.
So, whereas in the first, the City of Sparks, does that mean, is that supposed to be political subdivision?
I bet that's supposed to say political. I think that's a, we got a word replaced inward that...
Well, we're potential political. Okay, so, thank you, thank you. I know you guys worked hard, and it's, and we, if we replace those that are 40 feet down, what's, what kind of estimate do you have?
We are, we are working with an estimate, if we have to replace that whole force main system, of something on the order of three to three and a half million dollars.
And how long is this piece of pipe that we have to replace?
Well, it's actually, there are four pipes that come out of the wet well that transmit water into a common header, well, transmit fluid into a common header, probably a better, a better material, thank you, that then run into three lines. So, we have four 20-inch pipes that run into a common box that run to three 24-inch lines that then run several hundred, 300 or 400 feet across the plant to the beginning of the treatment process.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a big job.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's talk money here, Neil. Three to five million to replace the pipes. How much of that is under the emergency portion of this?
We don't know yet, and it's, and a lot of that is still to be determined. You know, we need to get that system isolated so that we can inspect it and see what kind of shape it's in, and is it just a local issue where it's the first just 20 feet of the pipe that's the problem? In that case, the number's a lot smaller, or is this something that we're, you know, we see every time any one of those pipes takes a 90-degree turn that we're, you know, we're wearing out the elbow over time? That, so we, we're not ready to answer that yet. We need to get the pump around in place, and then a detailed cleaning and inspection done of that force main system so that we can better be able to answer those kinds of questions.
I would assume one of our lessons learned under the electrical emergency was that diesel generators, pumps, and stuff are not cheap.
Yes, sir.
Based upon what we've ordered going into place right now, what is our 30-day cost for pump around?
We're looking at the, the best we have so far is a rough estimate that we received from the pumping contractor when he met with us Friday afternoon, and that was on a monthly basis of $150,000 to $200,000 to set up and operate the system. Now, he is, since then, time, he has begun working on a more detailed breakdown to where we will get mobilization costs, operation costs when the system is running, and maintenance costs when it's not. So, we are in the process of refining that, but for purposes of the best information we have now, $150,000 to $200,000 a month.
Fuel and everything?
Yes, sir.
For five pumping systems?
For a, actually, a system that will pump 150% of the inflow that we receive at Tom Whorf, and we're, we're in that 30 to 35 million gallon a day range, so we are looking at something on the order of a 50 million gallon a day pumping system.
What are reserves right now for the sewer plant?
I do not know that number. It's one we'll have to work with finance to get to you, but I will follow up with that and make sure that you all have...
I think this council needs to know where we're at financially. We're taking, we just did a 1.6 million, 1.4 million dollar contract. I think we should know how much money, you know, as this stuff comes forward, what's in your...
know, as this stuff comes forward, what's in your account, what's set aside for reserves for emergency, and how many days do we have under emergency conditions? You know, I don't think it'd be good to come back here next month and say, "Sorry, we need two more million dollars in the sewer fund because we're upside down." I don't think that's the case. I think we probably should have anywhere from five to 10 million dollars in there. But, you know, depending upon how long this goes on, you could be out of cash by the end of fiscal year.
I, I understand your point, sir.
And that's not a good place to be at.
I completely agree.
Let's get the numbers together. I want to see the numbers of where we're at.
We will, we will assemble them and get them to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carrigan?
I want to just kind of take on a, a point here, that we are very conscious of what is occurring at the treatment plant and our budget. We do that with great pride every single day. And we've dealt with two very catastrophic emergencies. And in my 20-year career, having two of these in close proximity is, is the only time it's ever happened. And I don't think that there is anything that's going to alarm you with the numbers and the engineering processes that we're doing. We have talked to the City of Reno, we have looked at our financial resources with Jeff Kronk, and we do have the money to sustain the operation of this plant properly through two emergencies. And that's because this council budgeted properly for its capital investment and replacement in the plant. And we are working on the monies that you've authorized, and we have the reserves to manage this situation. And we'll be happy to bring the numbers forward. But I want to put it in the proper light, that we're working extremely hard and always have the public's pocketbook in mind when we make these decisions on the fly in an emergency. And I'll bring you the numbers. And I hope that you can appreciate the true talent that you have working on something which is unforeseen and something that has to be corrected, and it must be corrected now against a set of challenges that are, are known. We need to invest around $150 million in our plant. And you'll be engaging in a rate process along with the City of Reno to set upon a path to accomplish those things. And that's truly the path we're on. I hope you, as members of the councils, will support this declamation and know that your staff is doing everything we can to get this plant operational and making the right decisions. And sometimes, we're gonna get this wrong. This isn't one of them. This is one where we're doing it right. And I wanted that on the record.
Ms. Ratty?
I was just curious how it works, because it's a jointly owned and operated facility. So we operate it, so therefore, it's our state of emergency?
Yes, ma'am.
But we're spending money that is contributed by both jurisdictions, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's happening at the City of Reno along this process?
The City of Reno, I don't know what is happening with their council. But I do know that at the staff level, they have been in lockstep with us from, from the second that, you know, we became aware that we had, we had this problem. So Friday morning, we have had City of Reno staff participation at, at every, at every step that we have taken. And they have been part of our decision-making and communications processes. So, you know, to come back to a, a point that Sean made, we are working very, very well together between the staff at Tomworth, you know, the engineering staff at the City of Sparks, and the engineering staff at the City of Reno.
And my understanding, and I was gonna actually commend you and that your team, that it's, that's true across not only the jurisdictions, the Health Department as well has been involved.
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
And then as well, across departments, that we've had support from the Fire Department to help with some of the safety issues, finance, I'm sure as well. I'm sure it's impacted many folks. But from everything that I hear, people working extremely well together to get it accomplished.
Yes, ma'am.
But you don't know what their governance process is around something like this.
I do not.
Because they don't have to be in a state of emergency, even though it's two-thirds of their plant?
You know, and now we're coming back to the, to the nature of what, of what, what kind of fix do we have?
Right.
You know, there is a certain point of the operating expenses that, that we manage that are set aside for, for some smaller capital projects, that it's, it's just, you know, more effective to have a little bit on our side and the vast majority of it on the Reno side. We may end up in a situation where we can handle this under that budget, in which case Reno, you know, at, at the, you know, policy-level decision may not need to be involved. If we get this, this force main system isolated and find that we've got to spend three or three and a half million dollars on it, then, then certainly, it's gonna require some sort of, of approval, whether it's through an emergency declaration, we don't, or, or normal spending, you know, habits, we don't know yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I'm looking through Resolution Number 3233.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith through approved agenda item 6.6 outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Neil. Good job, everybody. City of Reno, Washoe County, Board of Health, City of Sparks, everybody did a great job. So, keep it up. Thanks. Now, moving on to 8.1, PCN 12029, consideration of and possible action to amend the final plan development handbook Kylie Ranch North Phase 3. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a consideration of and possible action on the amendment to a final handbook for the Kylie Ranch Phase 3. I put this exhibit up... Let me zoom in a little bit.
Karen, can you do me a favor? Can you put the other one up side by side? Because I think it's easier to be...
Sure.
Know the existing and then the proposed. Thanks.
Okay. I just, first thing I wanted to identify is that this is the area for Phase 3. This would be Pyramid Highway. This is Lazy Five. This is Sparks Boulevard. This is the existing right now. You can see we've got two areas of CC, NC, and then HR. And what they're proposing to do is change it all to community commercial. And that would be to allow a medical campus on 40 acres of this, 101 acres is what they're proposing. The tentative handbook includes also, besides the changes in the land uses, there are also changes to the landscaping, architecture, science standards, and the site development standards. Like I said, it's, it's a medical campus for 40 acres of the 101 acres. Staff is of the opinion that the final handbook could potentially vary three of the five criteria for, in the NRS, for the adoption of a final handbook. And due to the fact that this is a request to an amendment to a recorded final handbook, staff determined this amendment requires a public hearing, which is what will be held today. Based on the criteria listed in the NRS, staff is of the opinion that this amendment complements and also contributes to creating a mixed-use community in the Kylie Ranch area, also creating a job-housing balance, which further the interests of the residents in the Kylie Ranch Plan Development, North Plan Development. Planning Commission and staff are recommending, based on the findings within the staff report. Based on that, we are recommending approval, and that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smith?
Karen, where's the medical facility? Is it gonna be in the north, northern part of that?
No. It'll actually be this parcel right here.
Okay.
That's about, I think it's 39-point-something acres.
Anyone else? The applicant, go ahead. Mr. Lawson, then Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I just want to make a disclosure that Young Electric Sign Company has helped with the sign design for Renown Health.
Has not, or has?
Has helped.
Has, okay.
And I receive no financial benefit from that. So I don't feel that that will make any influence on my decision today.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Mr. Carrigan?
I'm sorry. I just, when anybody discloses, I freak out over, I freak out because I thought the same thing. Never happened to me.
We do it so we don't need that.
I did that. I, I disclosed and still ended up, but anyway. I forgot the question I was gonna ask now. I got freaked out by that. Yeah. Up at the Lazy Five Parkway, is this thing gonna trigger the light? I know there's supposed to be a traffic signal up there.
It will not. Based on the traffic study that they submitted with this, it will not trigger that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, anyone from the applicant like to speak, or, okay, Karen, or Ms. Lindell?
Good afternoon, for the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I also have Steve Toponia with Renown Health with me, if there's any questions regarding that. We worked really hard with staff to add this medical campus in and kind of simplify the handbook, which has been really good. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in the public, speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to council for action. Any other questions or looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think this has been a, a great change to this project we have, and Renown on in should be able to bring, hopefully bring a catalyst to the project. We thank you for your time, everybody's time and effort for doing this. I think Rising Tide is doing a great job in, in moving this particular handbook forward. So with that, I'd like to make amendment to move to approve the final handbook amendment associated with PCN 12029, Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Phase 3, based upon the facts supporting these findings set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm gonna second with the comment too, is this is exactly the kind of economic development stuff that we're looking for. I think once Renown goes in there with their campus, it's just creating more action. There's gonna be more businesses go out there. You have doctors, radiology, testing. It's, it's a wonderful, wonderful project. Good thing for the community and good thing for Sparks.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Discussion. Mr. Smith?
Well, the map came, is down, but one of the roads is gonna come through from Vista over to the Kylie Ranch. I know there's at least one that's planned over there. It's not very far, but it, it would connect them.
Potentially Lazy Five would connect to a road within Pyramid Meadow, Pioneer Meadows, I'm sorry.
Right.
And that would connect then to Vista.
Is there, is there plans to do that anytime soon?
I don't think so. We don't have any development need for the road right now.
Okay. And when are we gonna start building the medical facility?
You would have to ask the applicant on that.
Okay, I'm asking. Couple of years?
Mr. Mayor, members, I'm Steve Toponia, Director of Real Estate, Renown Health. My crystal ball's still a little bit foggy. We will continue to monitor the growth out in the valley, and when it's justified, I assure you, we'll move forward. The acreage that we picked is pretty similar, almost identical to what we did down in South Meadows. That was a phased development with the exact same entitlements now that we will have when this is approved for Kylie Ranch as we have in South Meadows. So both are projected to be 300 beds at final buildout. If we don't do it now, it may not be available for us later when you need it.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Melissa. Mr. Toponia, thank you very much. Comments from the city council and city manager. Ms. Ratty?
I just wanted to take a minute to introduce a young man in the audience by the name of Ben Benson, who is working on his, he's working on a citizenship badge, but is working towards checking off the last few boxes so he can finish his Eagle Scout project. And I had the honor of being interviewed by him this week, but I'm always proud of the young folks who get involved in community service in their community. He's doing, did an excellent project, working to assist homebound seniors. So just wanted to thank him for being...
I think being able to sit through this meeting, you should get your Eagle Scout, no problem. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Seeing none, we're adjourned.